Sorry, um, all right, I was thinking, so maybe let's start with introductions and I can go first.
Okay.
Um, I'm Sala D'Orizie, I use she/her pronouns. I'm a sophomore at Annaly. Um, I'm the action lead of our hub and I've been here since we started in April. And I'm also a junior commissioner on the junior commission on the status of women for Sonoma County.
Nice.
Uh, I'm Rachel. I go by she/her/hers pronouns. I am also a sophomore at Annaly and I'm the training lead for our hub. And I've also been here since we started our hub during the pandemic over the summer.
Nice to meet you.
My name's Amy and I'm also a sophomore at Annaly. I use she/her pronouns and they/them pronouns. And I'm the hub coordinator of our hub. And like Sala, I'm also on the junior commission on the junior, on the status of women.
Okay. Well, more nervous than this than any of the other forums. Cause you're like the future of America. It's great.
All right, so to start off, we thought we'd do like an overview of our goals for this meeting. And tell you a little bit about what the Sunrise Movement is. So Sunrise is a national youth movement that is working to combat climate change and social injustice. And create millions of good jobs in the process. We're aligned with the Movement for Black Lives and also organize a law around passing the Green New Deal.
Um, so our goals for this meeting are getting to know you a little bit better. As well as your vision at a local and national level. What about you? Do you have any specific goals for this meeting?
No, not, not coming into it completely open-minded.
All right.
Except for I feel really old. Right, compared to year three, thanks a lot, right? It's great, yeah.
Um, so I guess jumping into the questions a little bit, um, starting off. Could you give us a brief introduction of yourself and your platform?
Sure, so, so my name, of course, is Michael Karnaki. And I have been a business owner in Sebastopol for 27 years on Main Street. I repair shoes pretty much. And while I started off repairing shoes, now I make boots. Um, but let's see. I apprenticed in Khatari where I actually did a, I worked for a person named Joseph Schuman. And I slept on his boot shop floor and his parents were both survivors of the Nazi concentration camps in Poland. They were, when Germany occupied Poland. His father was a shoemaker, so he was fortunate enough to live. He was a Jew. And so he lived in three different concentration camps, work camps, including Auschwitz. And he was forced to make boots for the Nazis, so. So my apprenticeship in Khatari was much more than just learning about shoes. But it was a courageous learning experience. So then I eventually moved into Khatari and took over a shop, I mean into Sebastopol and took over a shop 27 years ago. Went out and studied how to make boots. Um, and I think that I have a pretty good feeling of the residents in Sebastopol because everybody wears shoes. So you know, there are, there are people, I've met so many interesting characters over the year. So then I wanted to get involved in, while I was always involved in the political side of Sebastopol. And then I decided that I wanted to try and do something about traffic, which is, I haven't been very successful, but, but we're working on it. So that's kind of a short, uh, my campaign currently, I'm not accepting any money. I'm not spending any money. I'm not accepting or seeking any endorsements. I don't have any campaign signs and no printed propaganda, so I have zero waste. I don't have a website to waste the energy for the web. So I'm really trying to run a really, really, really clean campaign. I look at it this way, either people know who I am and like what I'm doing. Or they don't. And either way, you know, as long as they vote, that's great. I mean, that's the most important thing. So whether I win or lose, I'm really okay either way. If I lose, that's great. I can go back to being a private citizen. If not, then I feel like it's kind of really is a mandate from the people in this, the residents of Sebastopol. That say, keep going. So then I served four years, but then I'm maxed out at that point. So, and then maybe it was too long, but thanks for listening.
No, that was, that was perfect. Um, what motivated and continues to motivate you for running for city council? You got into it a little bit.
So, so the one thing that's really important is I've really, so I am the director for Sebastopol on the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I had to study a lot about groundwater sustainability. And it's really a lot of technical and geographical, geological information that I had to study about where our, so our three wells go into what's called the Wilson Grove Highland Formation. And so we're in the middle, about halfway through coming up with the groundwater sustainability plan. And I think that I'm probably the best qualified amongst my colleagues because of the, the amount of time I put into studying in it to continue in that basis. I've also developed a really good working relationship with Caltrans. And Caltrans, I don't know if you're aware, but Caltrans not only owns the two state highways that intersect in our downtown. But they also own the sidewalks. So it's really important that we have a really good working relationship with Caltrans going forward. The, all of the ADA upgrades, the Americans with Disabilities Act upgrades that are happening in the downtown. Which you may have noticed or not, that's much more accessible now. And I've really worked, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of hours in building a relationship with Caltrans that is probably the best in the history of Sebastopol. And so, building upon that relationship is important because all of the monies that are used to maintain our, our, our intersections in the downtown all come from the state, which is a cursing and a blessing. So it's a blessing because if we're forward-thinking and we can think of a plan that looks out six years as to what we want, we can put that into the, into the process. And then we can get state funding to have new light posts and sidewalks and all kinds of different improvements to our downtown. So I would like to continue in that. Also, um, the alternate representative for ABA, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments. And I think that that's important that I continue in that. And what else? There was one other thing, but I can't remember it. But those are a few of the reasons why I would like to continue.
Awesome. Um, what would you prioritize if you got re-elected?
So definitely the relationship with Caltrans and the groundwater sustainability. I also think that, that we have to be very careful when we talk about building housing, that we don't create more climate change. Especially when we're talking about affordable housing. If we just build affordable housing and we don't have a job infrastructure here in Sebastopol, it compounds the climate problem because the people that are living in the affordable housing complex have to drive, you know, to other jurisdictions in order to work. And that actually defeats the purpose. So I want to be really careful that if we have affordable housing, that we have a, a job base that can support that affordable housing. And/or build affordable housing that can house people that are actually working at Whole Foods or working at Safeway or working in some of the retailers that can live there. So that way they can utilize the West County Regional Trail and not have a car. And so there would be a lot of ways that we could actually improve upon our climate. But you have to be careful with the housing. So there's a couple. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Could you tell us about some of your accomplishments during your last term on city council?
Well, I would say that I have definitely did the, made the downtown as much more accessible. I think that we've made good progress with the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. The relationship with Caltrans is much better. Like I said in the, in the past, it's the best that's been in the history of Sebastopol. I think that I built a pretty good, I'm pretty engaged with the community. I always have been. And, and I think that that is something that is different about me as opposed to my colleagues. My shop is always open. So if I'm there, you could walk in and talk about whatever issues you want. And that does happen quite often. So I think that that's, that is a good thing, a positive thing. Other than that, if you ask my colleagues what I've accomplished, I think that they would say that, well, I've kind of ruffled a lot of feathers with, with them. I think that I pushed back on some of their policy a little bit. And you know, that may be part of the reason why I might get re-elected. Because I think that Sebastopol, some of the residents, maybe a majority of the residents feel like, how do I want to say it? They're not completely, I think that if they feel like they like that I have, sometimes have a, 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 an opinion that is different than the rest, which creates critical thinking. I don't know if, if with you, you're the same way. Like when I am, when I am certain that I have an opinion in one particular way and then I have a friend that I trust and I respect and they have a completely different opinion than I do. It causes me to critically think my previous opinion and change it if necessary. And I think that that's really important in government. Because once you have what's called a group think, where if, say, one of you says, hey, I got this great idea. And then, you know, a second one of you says, oh yeah, that's great, because you think it's a great idea. I do too. And then the third says, oh yeah, well, because you two think it's a great idea. This is a really great idea. And there's not really any critical thinking that happens. And then before you know it, everybody's just kind of going in one direction. And there's not real critical thinking about, like for instance, affordable housing. Just the thought that, oh, we need to build affordable housing, but without thinking about the job base and the structure and the, and the collateral damage. You know, the, the bike lanes is a good example where the, the unintended consequences are with the bike lanes. The idea is, is to get people on their bicycles to reduce greenhouse gas effects ultimately. And what we ended up happening is, is with the bicycle lanes, we've actually slowed down the traffic so much. And now we have a bunch of cars idling in our downtown. And that in turn creates more greenhouse gas effects. So, so that was something I don't think that where critical thinking could have been brought into the picture. And maybe looked at, at that in, in a different way, but I'm losing my thought here, but that's.
Yeah, I think those are good points, like critical thinking. I, I agree. Pass it off to Amy now.
All right, so now we're going to ask more like climate-related questions. First one is, do you know about like what the Green New Deal pledge is?
I, I, I have not. I haven't studied it as much as I probably will at some point. I don't know if there are, if there's a whole lot of details about it and, um, yeah, so no, I'm not.
Um, so I can give you like a brief overview and we can send a follow-up email with more information about it. But basically what it means is that you'd use your elected office to like, support all the principles of a Green New Deal on a local level. And then one more pledge, the No Fossil Fuel Money Pledge. And this one's really easy and straightforward. It's just basically saying that you won't accept any large contributions of money from like fossil fuel lobbyists.
Yeah. That's good. So, so the second one, I definitely don't, I'm not accepting any monies and I wouldn't accept any monies. I, I really, I kind of wear, I definitely wear my own boots. I don't, you know. In representative government, I am supposed to represent your views. You know, so I should be, you know, willing to change in whatever way the majority is, is kind of how a republic works. I'm just a representative of you. I feel like in a Republican government, while I absolutely live by this, that the, the citizens, which are you, are the, are the primary, the principal and the permanent rulers. And that when I assumed office within that Republican government, I became the temporary and transient ruler that has stepped down to serve you. And so I've actually decreased in power in order to serve the permanent rulers. And that I actually don't return to my full power until after I leave office. And then I become a permanent citizen again, and then that restores me to my full power. The problem with politics that I see today is that people that are elected oftentimes think that they step up. And now they're more powerful than the citizen. And so, so that kind of, I kind of digressed and diverged there a little bit. But back then to the climate change point that you brought up with the pledge. I would be more than happy to look at that and study it. But I think that some of the things that I brought up already are probably addressed by, by that, I'm guessing.
All right, so the next question is, what is your plan to increase Sebastopol's fire preparedness and resiliency?
Okay, so that is, I'm glad you brought that up. That's great. So this is, if you can see this, this is the Sebastopol, City of Sebastopol Emergency Plan. The last time it was updated was 1980, 1997. And so I am on the Sebastopol Emergency Plan Update Committee. Although I gotta say, I'm a little disappointed in the amount of progress we've made on it. It is really onerous. There's a lot of details that need to be covered. So I would, I would like to really push for that at this point. I mean, you know, this, this plan that we have currently, there was really no mobile phones at that point in time. And you know, so many things have changed since then that we really need to look at that. We need to look at. For instance, during the, the evacuations that happened in the, in the previous fire two years ago, fires two years ago, there was no way, we didn't control our main intersections in the downtown because the lights were out. And so that's one blaring example of where we need to have a better plan. Because we should have had somebody on that intersection controlling that intersection immediately, having some sort of control because people would sit literally, I heard, for four hours just to go three blocks. And that's, that's not acceptable in a real emergency. So, so yes, it is, I think that's the most important thing that faces Sebastopol right now is, is coming up with an emergency plan.
Yeah, great. I totally agree with that. Um, so the next question is, how do you see a COVID recovery plan intersecting with like a Green New Deal and more specifically a just transition?
That's a difficult question. I don't know how they intersect COVID and the Green New Deal. I'm, I'm not sure how to make that intersection. I know that the city of Sebastopol, I mean, the best that we have done so far is to put out all the information that we can and to the residents. And we supplied masks. If you want masks, you can get a mask from the city that has the whole city logo on it. I think that our residents are pretty responsible. So I think that really alls we can do is kind of guide the citizenry and, and hopefully, hopefully they will be responsible enough to help check this, this COVID. I think that with regard to a Green New Deal, I think that COVID is just, and really bad for all of the waste. I mean, the amount of waste that we have is, is horrible. Because of COVID, you know, with all the bags and people just using single-use and all the carryout. So I don't know how that would intersect exactly. I think they more collide. And I think that there's more of a collision than an intersection. So that's going to be, I don't think I can answer that question really. That's a, that's a good question. So if you, do you have any ideas? I'm happy to hear them.
Pretty hard question.
Sometimes I've, I've realized that sometimes it's not so important that you have the answer to the question. But rather just in the, the virtue of asking the question itself is what creates the thinking process. You know, like in, in example for housing, everybody's talking about building more housing. My question that I ask, and I don't expect an answer to it, is, should we be talking about building more housing when we can't even keep the power on for our current housing inventory? You know, so we already can't supply enough energy to the houses. And we're talking about building, you know, hundreds of thousands of more new homes. I mean, so is that really smart or is it? So, you know, I can't really answer that question, but that's one question that I bring up during housing forums is, is that, is that the smart thing to do, so?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I'd say is just making sure that like any, like legislation, like any plans made regarding COVID, like make sure that they are like sustainable or like, I don't know, like in line with the Green New Deal. So just making sure it's passed the lines of that, but nothing.
That sounds good.
But now we're going to move on to affordable housing, which I hope you would like to.
That's, that's me. Um, you have told us a little bit about your views on affordable housing. But I'd still like to ask just to maybe get a better sense of where you stand and learn a little bit more about your views. So what ideas do you have to create more affordable and sustainable housing in Sebastopol? And you can like tie that in with like why we, you know, shouldn't or like how to do it responsibly and all that.
Okay, so I will give you an example. There is a project pending coming for building behind O'Reilly. Do you know where the O'Reilly Office Complex is? At the end of the West County Regional Trail by, by the Waldorf School? Right there, those, those big buildings that are there? Okay, so behind there is the Series Garden. And they're talking about taking, there's two lots back there and they want to build market rate units. I think up to 110 units, which is a lot of traffic, a lot of people. It increases our population quite drastically with one project. I've always thought that that particular parcel there would lend itself really well for a Scandinavian model. And you may want to write this down and you can find it on YouTube. It's called My 90-Year-Old Flatmate. And it is a model of housing where the youth in the community, for instance, in this case, I think in the model, it's students. But in our case in Sebastopol, it could be either students and/or workers at Whole Foods or some of the retail stores or something like that. What they do is they're offered a discount in this housing unit for living. So they get a discount price in exchange for, the other part of the housing complex is seniors that need help and assistance. So the students get a discount on their rent and their housing in exchange for helping the seniors when they're not going to school or working. And what ends up happening, if you watch the documentary, you see that this beautiful relationship happens between the youth and the elders in the community. And in, in our case, with the West County Regional Trail ending right there or going right there behind O'Reilly, you know, you could have the, the younger people that are living in that complex that work at Whole Foods during the day, for instance, they can ride their bicycles or walk down the West County Regional Trail. They don't have to have a car. They don't have to pay for insurance. So they're able to actually save a little bit of money and work their way up. And, and in one portion, I envision of, in that project would be a small tiny home community where once these students actually are to the point where they can afford a small, a tiny down payment on a tiny home, they could actually begin to build their credit and buy a little tiny home. And to start their way up and actually work their way up. Because most of the people in the lower income, I think it's only, you only have like a 40% chance of making it into the middle income if you're in the lower income, which is really, really a small percentage. So that's, that's the kind of vision that I have for, for housing, you know, in a way that would help the climate. It will help the youth, it'll help the elders. It's really a great project. But when I bring that up at the council meeting, I have four colleagues on the council that are for absolutely in favor of doing the market rate housing there. Which is, just doesn't make any sense to me when we could really put our foot up and say, this is the kind of project that we want. So that's kind of what I have in mind. So I think you'll really appreciate the documentary. It's really is a good, good documentary.
Yeah, that sounds super interesting. I will definitely look into it. And, um, we weren't going to bring this up because we've been to council meetings for the Sebastopol Inn Project. But I am like curious about, um, both on your views on the Sebastopol Inn Project and also your thoughts on like alternatives to that. In a, because I did like, like the Scandinavian model sounds really interesting. If you have similar ideas for that kind of thing.
Well, I do. I think that, um, so, so two things. One is the Sebastopol Inn. So the thing that I was really upset with is that by virtue of the county making a purchase of that property that is in Sebastopol proper, which is in our sovereign jurisdiction as a city. They are expanding their territory so that that will then be county property and will be operated under county land zoning and, and land use and zoning policies. So by virtue of them, it's a purchase of that property, they have expanded their, their territory into our sovereign territory. And in doing so, they didn't even consult our general plan. They didn't talk about our zoning code. They didn't consult with our planning director. So in my opinion, it is an affront to our integrity as a independent and sovereign jurisdiction in what the county is doing here. So the process here really stinks, in my opinion. And it really kind of ruffled my feathers, although again, I'm kind of a lone dissenter, if you will, on the council with regard to this project. As far as my idea of what we could do with homeless, what you're like, Annaly and, and the Sebastopol Union School District and the Sebastopol, the Westernoma County Union High School District. I think that, that by, by buying the Sebastopol Hotel and making that into a homeless housing for 31 people or whatever, it will be very small, that it basically puts a Band-Aid on, on the problem, on the, on the cut when the artery is open. And when I say the artery being open, I'm talking about what I call, so they talk about vulnerable homeless and I'm calling homeless vulnerable, which would be the students at your school or at Elmo that are, are not excelling academically. So what do they have when they get out of school? I mean, they really don't have anything. I mean, they could become a barista or work at one of the local stores. They could sell drugs. They could, which would add to mental illness, which would, you know, can, can lead to homelessness. So, so that's where the artery is open. And especially now with the distance learning, I think that there are going to be a lot more kids, a lot more of our students and our youth that are going to be homeless, vulnerable coming out of school. So, so what I think we need to do is we need to immediately invest in vocational education. And start teaching the students, and to offer, I think Elmo is a perfect place that have a vocational education center where they teach students how to frame a house, how to side it, put in the electrical, put in the plumbing, put on the roof, put in the air conditioning units. And really give them, and to work with the unions and to give the students an opportunity that once they get out of high school, they're excelling vocationally, which will balance the equality between the students. Because the students that are excelling academically now will, the, the students that are excelling vocationally will feel equal to those students because they have a skill that the academic students don't necessarily have. And to enter into the vocational program, there would be a necessity for some of these students to learn the basics in math. Because there's math that's required for when you're framing a house or putting in plumbing or that kind of thing. So that would create incentive for the students in order to get into the vocational program. They would have to go through some basic math. So that's incentive for these kids to learn math. They would have to go through some basic math, so that's incentive for these kids to learn math. And then they get out of school and they go both right into vocational education, which gives them a self-assent, and right into a vocational job. As an apprentice with the union or something, which gives them a sense of self-worth, which is less likely to end up with drugs. Less likely to end up with mental illness, less likely to end up homeless. So I think that until we start investing the kind of money that we're trying to throw at the Sebastopol Inn. You know, if you look at that is uh, forty thousand dollars per um, um, homeless person. Per year just to house them there. So that's comes after you do the initial purchase. Well, if you took forty thousand dollars and invested that per student trip of thirty one students in Annaly. My God, that is like really helps with the homeless in the long run. So I have given it a lot of thought. I've been to many of the. Uh, Westernoma County Union High School District Board meetings and trying to promote this, but I feel like. The board is oftentimes made up of volunteers and they don't really get it. And I I don't really understand. Why? Because it's such a simple thing, you know, I've talked to the Hopkins about it. Um, I brought it up during the during the housing. Um, Zoom meetings that we had about the Sebastopol Inn, but it always seems to fall on deaf ears. And I think it's so important that we look at this. And then another thing that I think we could do with the schools that would help with that would be at um, Parkside right now, we have forty five percent. I think it's forty five percent of the students are bilingual. So, so what I think we should be doing at Parkside right now is in investing, I mean, immersing the. Uh, English-only speaking students in Spanish immediately, like boom, right at an early age. So that way they can speak with their peers in two different languages, breaks down the cultural barrier, which is great. I mean, and then they get into Brookhaven, they're already bilingual. So then they can go into learn Latin or Spanish, I mean, or or advanced Spanish or French. So by the time they get to Annaly, they're, they have the opportunity to be multilingual. So then Sebastopol as a whole, as a school system, would be known as the um, uh, Language and Vocational Arts Center. Of Sonoma County. So people would want to come to Sebastopol and it would create um. Um, families that are young families to come to Sebastopol so that their students could become, you know, multilingual. By the time they get out of high school, I mean, that is just would be really great, I, in my opinion. So I. I've given a lot of thought, sorry for a long-winded answer, but I think that uh, with regard to homelessness, there's a lot of answers out there. That aren't just putting a Band-Aid on the, on the immediate little scratch that's leaving.
No, yeah, I I liked that answer a lot. It like, instead of just like thinking about like. What to do now, like thinking about how like on a whole kind of to like. Make our community more vibrant and um, just better to be in. And yeah, I liked that. That was interesting and I hadn't really considered it. Um, anyway, I'm going to pass it off to Rachel now.
Yeah, I wanna quickly add to what Sol, Sol was saying. Uh, I really appreciated your answer, one. Because I have also had similar complaints about the school system in terms of. Not teaching practical skills and just focusing on the academics. And that's really not where everyone is going to be in their future. So um, I think it's really important to expand on. Like all the skills that we need for life, not just one certain path. Um, and then I also really appreciated your answer about um, introducing um, more more uh, language into. Our community. Um, actually, I am bilingual and uh, my twin is too. Uh, we we speak Spanish and we were really frustrated when we went to Annaly and um. They wouldn't really let us be in a more advanced Spanish. So I feel like by um, introducing, you know, Spanish into our schools. We could really get much more of a program going to and get a lot more people to speak Spanish. Um, so now we're going to move on to um, social justice related questions. Um, so the first question is, do you support defunding or divesting from the police? And if so, how would you make it happen in Sebastopol, especially taking the stacked budget into account?
Taking the what budget?
Budget.
The stacked budget?
Forty five percent of.
So you know, I've given a lot of thought about that. I think that the way to decrease the amount, the forty five percent of the budget is to increase. Our budget revenue, which would make that percentage decrease. I mean, all of departments currently run on a very, very thin budget. Um, I think that there could be more accountability on how the police department is spending their money, although they get a pretty good hearing uh, during the budget. Uh, subcommittee um, hearings on what they're going to be spending their money on. Uh, so I really think that that's probably the easiest, well, I don't know that's the easiest way, but it seems the most rational way to. To really um, uh, decrease that forty five percent is by increasing the amount of revenue coming in to the budget. So that reduces that number certainly. I think that um, our police department is already pretty diverse. And I'll share a funny story because we have Sergeant Wong who is Chinese. Um, he and um, we were having a a discussion, uh, oh, it's probably a couple of years ago with the former chief. About how you get a bonus if you're bilingual, right? If you, as as a police officer, so if you come into the police department and you are bilingual, you actually get paid more before being bilingual. And so I asked what languages they speak, you know, to the police chief and he said, well, we have one that speaks Chinese. One that's uh, two that are Spanish, uh, or four, I think there's four Spanish and. Uh, but anyways, the one that was Chinese, I assumed it was Charlie Wong is the guy, is the officer's name is Sergeant Wong. He's the, the officer that has the canine. If you ever see the canine run around, that's Officer Wong. So I happened to see them at rotten, rotten Robbie's. At one point and it was two of the officers together and I sent to Charles Wong, to Sergeant Wong, I said, so I didn't know you spoke Chinese and he says, I don't. You know, and he said, and and it would happen to be his partner, who is just your typical Caucasian, who was the Chinese speaker. And so I actually profiled a police officer, which is exactly what we complain about them profiling. People and stop, you know, I profiled him because he was Chinese of, in the Chinese descent, I assumed he was the one that spoke Chinese. So I think we have a pretty diverse um, police department as it is. I mean, I know pretty much all of the department personnel, including public works and the fire department and the police department and. And planning, I know all of them by first name, which is probably, I know a large majority of them by first name. On a first name basis, which is kind of a hands-on way that I I do as a council member and. Um, I think that that in comparison to my colleagues, I think if you. I think that I know more of them by first name, more of the people that work for the city by first name than all of them combined, honestly. So I have this unique relationship with them and and I can say that in our police department, I have not experienced personally. Anybody that that would say that it was um, we have to be careful with the word um. I can't even think of it now. Um. It's the um, hang on a second, let me think about it. It's not discrimination, it's more a harsh word than discrimination. I cannot think of it. It's not white privilege, it's um. Got it, so far out of my mind, I can't, cannot bring it up. Sorry, it will come to me. It's it's a kind of a narrative, it's a, it's a, it's a word that's used often now, but I just cannot pull it up where um. Okay, I'm lost on that one. I'll have to come back to it, but but I don't think that there's any outright um, that. That where any of the officers in our police department feel like they are su- uh, um. Superior because of their race. You know, I don't, I've not seen that personally. I haven't experienced that personally and I just don't think it exists. Um, white. And what is it, the word, maybe you've got it, where you feel like your race is superior than than someone else? Uh, maybe white, well, not supremacy, another word. Yeah, anyways, I it's, I've totally lost on me, but. So I don't think that that's an issue right now. I think that there are other issues that we have and I think all of departments, if you're aware of what's happening in the departments. Every department has its issues predominantly, you know, with um, the way that management works with the employees. I mean, it's just like at work, with anybody's job, you know, your boss, there's, there's problems between the workers and the boss. Sometimes, you know, so I think that, that they're relatively minor and that they could be worked through. So as far as defunding the police, I don't think that that is a good idea to completely defund them. I think that if we increase our budget and invite, invest those monies in. In uh, in other ways that that will bring down the percentage of monies that we spend on the police department. Does that answer the question? I mean, where do you all stand on that? Defund the police? I mean.
We uh. We uh, do think um, that we want to defund the police, both in our community and at a more national level. That's something that Sunrise uh, definitely stands for and something that we stand for too. Because it's very connected with um, climate justice. Um, and that's kind of, uh, if you look more into the Green New Deal, it's not just about. Uh, fighting the climate crisis, but also about ensuring that we have a just transition for workers. Who were um, working in like coal mines and all that and the fossil fuel industry, making sure they have uh, good jobs. And that the minority communities um, who are actually most impacted by uh, by the climate crisis. Have um, safe communities to live in and a lot of that is people of color. So um, to us, it's very connected and we do uh, stand by people of color and.
I'm not, so it's not like a complete abolishment of the police, but more like reapportioning some of the funds. So that like, um, instead of like, a lot of it, I guess, is about like mental health and just having like. Other people, people other than least dealing with like mental health crises and other things like that. So just kind of like reapportioning the funds and the tasks more than like a complete abolishment.
Well, I'd definitely be open to seeing what that looks like for sure. I mean, and and that is so true. I mean, I would, I don't know the percentage and hopefully with the audit. That's coming up of the police department, we will be able to find out the percentage of health, I mean, of mental health calls. I mean, I saw one yesterday in front of Whole Foods, a guy refused to wear his mask going in, you know, the police had to be called, you know. And there's always that risk that this guy is going to do something that's going to get him tased by not obeying or or or, you know. At uh, respecting what the officers are saying. So I'm always a little worried that we're gonna end up having, you know. An issue of use of force because of the mental health call that was happening. And this guy was pretty, he was definitely was, it was a mental call, there's no question about it. So, you know, would he respect somebody coming up to him trying to help that wasn't an officer? I would hope that that would be a better solution certainly, but right now that's what we have. And these officers had to serve basically as mental health officers and probably wrote him up on a fifty one fifty. And took him in, so it's a seventy two hour hold, after which time the guy's back out on the street again, which is, you know, um. It was, and I think it was repeated calls by Whole Foods that he kept coming back and wanting to come in the store without, without a masking. And so that, I I would support that if it worked. I would say, yes, it would be nice for us to have a little team of mental health experts that could respond on that type of call, so it's not a uniformed officer. So certainly I would be open for improvement.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, when we looked at uh, making uh, like some um. Investment in the community that take away from the police budget, uh, and when we were thinking about it specifically in Sebastopol. Uh, we looked at creating um, a bigger mental health unit because the one we have right now is part-time and incredibly small. And so um, by investing in it, this could really help out a lot of situations.
Yeah, and can I, sorry, I was just going to say like, a lot of the whole, like the term defunding the police is very off-putting to people. But it's less about like taking away um, the like money from police and more like. Finding alternatives and like not forcing them to deal with situations they aren't trained or like fully capable to um. Like handle and just because they have like so much on their plates, like it's like crazy. Like how much the police are expected to deal with in our communities. So just reapportioning and spreading it out a bit um, further. So that it's more balanced, I guess.
Right. And you know, bringing back programs like we used to have with Sebastopol Police, which was midnight basketball, midnight sports, do, are you familiar with that program? So they would play, there was a couple of officers, both of them bilingual, and they would play basketball as, I think, starting at nine P M at Brookhaven. And all the students and they would play and the fire department would be there and they'd have a big dinner at the end of the thing, at the end of the, the program. So that got cut. Um, I think that that was really important for building community policing. I think that the Citizens Police Academy, have you all ever attended that? Cause that, that was really good. That was happening every year and that also got cut, I think, bringing that back. And basically what that did is you, through the police department, you get exposed to all of the. Systems of government with regard to policing. You meet the district attorney, you meet the uh, public defender. You meet the judge that was in in charge of the um, child protective services. Uh, you would go on a tour of the jail, you meet the sheriff, uh, you got to do the, the use of force simulator. Which we have at the police department where you actually have a real gun that has been uh, in um, has been changed. To to register on a screen and it's a full screen where you're, you're put into different situations where you actually drive up in the car. You get out of your car, you enter into this situation, you have no idea, the most harrowing, I think, are the ones that are domestic violence calls. Because you don't know what you're going to experience when you go there. So it it gives you. An opportunity to experience what police officers actually go through when they are. Go out on a call and it really gave me a whole, when I, when I participated in it, it really gave me a whole different perspective on what. And a different level of respect for police officers because it is really a scary situation. When you have to go into that and enter into it not knowing what you're going to have. So, so I would suggest, I mean, you could maybe reach out to the police department. And ask them the next time they have their use of force simulator set up, if you could actually use it. And they may just let you use it so you could experience it on your own, but I think that that bringing back the Citizens Police Academy is really important. Um, having coffee with the cop, I think that Annaly has been asking for a school resource officer for. Uh, the last four years, I think, and and the Sebastopol Police Department has not provided that. I don't know what the current position is by um, um. Superintendent um, Beal, but uh, I don't know if she still wants that or not because of the current climate with regard to policing. But I mean, that was a way that the students could interact also with the police officer and kind of build this community policing. I think we should have a beat cop where he gets out of his car, walks the downtown. I think that that builds a relationship as well. Um, over the years of being in business for twenty seven years, I did build a great relationship with former police officers and all of the chiefs. I mean, they're totally accessible to the community, you know, when they're, when the, when they're out front of the police department boycotting. Or calling for the defunding of the police when they're set up in your driveway, I don't know how many of those people realize that the police department is completely accessible. They just have to turn around and walk into the police department and it can meet with just about anybody there, including the chief, which is. Is usually always accessible. Hopefully we will have a female chief at at some point in time. But uh, so I think there are policies that we could implement at the police department that would be beneficial for the whole community.
Alright. Um, so what is your position on ICE? And how will you support undocumented residents um, in terms of them, or just in general, I guess?
So my position on ICE, um. Well, first of all, let's talk about what exists as the facts. The facts are that I have been eating and been sustained. Nutritionally sustained for nearly all of the twenty seven years that I've been in business by certain individuals that work in town that are undocumented. So, you know, I'm thankful for that, and and these are. Good human beings. Um, I think that there needs to be a path. Way to um, to citizenship. That that gives them, um, I think that Diane Feinstein at one point, and I think Kamala Harris um. Uh, have sponsored a bill that would create a blue card. Um. And I think you can look it up if you do Google uh, blue card and Kamala Harris or Feinstein. And you should be able to find it, but I really would support legislation that, like that, that offers. These individuals a way to become citizens. Because they have already been here for, like I said, as long as I've been in business, twenty seven years. In some cases, it's the same people working at the same restaurants. Who I know are are not, or I suspect, I don't know, I've never actually asked them, but I suspect they are not in the United States legally and they do not have papers. I can say that when I was growing up in Detroit, Michigan, my family came through Ellis Island in nineteen oh seven from Italy. And they went to Detroit to build the roads for the up and coming automobile industry. So they are all Italian immigrants, and the word WAP, which my family was subject to, you stupid WAP. You know, WAP actually means without papers. And so that's where that derogatory term is derived from. So I do know um, from that perspective, um. What it is to be discriminated against for being in the country illegally, because my family was in that same similar situation. Of course, now my family is here legally, um, because we were all born here. Um. And uh, you know, I was also subjected to as a white person. In living in Detroit, I was subject to being discriminated for being white because I was called um. Uh, white fish and soda cracker. By certain people in our community that we were unknown, I mean, that I had relationships with, so. Uh, so it's tough. I just wish that we could all be Americans with different skin color. Well, it's like with different shades of skin, just like first and foremost, you're American. I think that that's where the equality exists. So I don't know, did I answer the question about ICE? I I mean, I think we've already got policies in Sebastopol that where Sebastopol Police Department cannot um, interact with ICE. Uh, but that does nothing for them not when they're off duty. I mean, they can do whatever they want off duty if they want to make a call to ICE if they're. Suspected. I will say that I did hear, um, when I first took office of one incident where a Sebastopol Police. Officer was discriminating against a person that was of um, Hispanic origin and um. Said to them that if you know, if you ever show your face back here in Sebastopol, I will make sure that you're deported or something of that sort. So I heard about that. I did a little bit of research. I found it on the Americans with Civil Liberties website. I printed it. And I went into the police department and I set it on the chief's desk and I said, did this really happen? And so he said, well, it could have. Uh, but here is a scenario that maybe you haven't looked at and how it could have happened. So it kind of was a. A sidestepping the. My question, but I think that I I did get to see it from a different perspective that I hadn't looked at it before. But nevertheless, the courageous part, I think, on my part was being able to just walk in there and. Walk and sit down at the chief and put it on his desk and say. I mean, it was really hard for me to do that, like, did this happen? You know, and so, so I'm not afraid to do that in the future. If if I hear of some sort of discrimination that's happening on the part of the police department, I would definitely con- confront them directly. Without hesitation.
Okay. Um, and then, okay, our next question is, how have you personally supported the movement for Black Lives? And how do you take initiative in supporting Black, Indigenous, and people of color in the future?
Um, well, I think what we did to the Pomos is horrible. You know, and I brought that up during the whole conversation. I said, well, we'll deserve our time when Pomos Lives mattered. You know, my colleague, uh, council member Gurney, she says, well, we have, we have Pomos Heritage Month. And I look back and, you know, when we did the, the proclamation for Pomos Heritage Month, there was nobody even from the Pomos tribe. There to accept the proclamation. And I said to her, I said, well, this is exactly what we want to avoid. First, we take all their land and then we give them a month. You know, it's like, it was totally ridiculous. So, so with regard to um. My own personal um, experience with um. Discrimination and judgment is, you know, I really started to pay attention how much. I, as an individual, when you cross somebody on the sidewalk, all I was really tracking in my ability, in my. Effort to become a better human being, I was really tracking all of the judgments that happened. And if you're really acutely aware of it, you, it's amazing how many there are, how they're dressed, how they walk, how they look, what, what gender they are. Um, age, you know, skin color. So all of these judgments just naturally happen. You know, not that I'm willfully doing, but I mean, it just, it's, I think, if you track it, it it's a natural. Thing with the, a human being, I I think, maybe less so for you, hopefully less so for you, but just in the way I was raised, it's a little bit different. So I was really tracking that and really trying to, to. Put all of those aside and work on seeing the essence of, the essence that animates. That person when I cross paths with them and and looking past everything else and and being just identify with that essence. Uh, that animates the molecules uh, that that create that human being. So I've been working intensely. On a personal level to do with all, do away with all of the different judgments and discriminations that I have. And I think, in my opinion. As important as the Black Lives Matter movement is, at this time, I feel like I have actually taken. Steps backwards because we're now so identified with a person's skin color. And I don't know that, that, I mean, I think everybody's experiencing that now, like, I don't think I'm, I'm the only one. I think that we all, like, now we're really acutely aware of a difference in skin color and. And I don't know if that's good or bad or. Um, still working with that one. Um. What was I gonna say? Um. Yeah, that's, that's about it. There's something, it'll come to me at some point, but I can maybe follow up on that when it does.
Uh, one last question here uh, for this issue. Um, how will you incorporate Indigenous leadership into the city government?
Got it. So I'm, I'm actually moving a um, an agenda item to the city council that I think it's coming, the second meeting in October. Which I am calling the uh, Sebastopol City Council Diversification Initiative. And basically what that's going to do is um, require term limits. Okay, which will create my more diversity, because there'll be more term, there'll be more turnover on city council. I would like to see um, um, what's called a ranked choice voting, which gives minorities and people uh, that are less popular in the community. Uh, the more uh, a better chance of, of getting elected. Um, although I don't know that we can enact that because we are not um. A charter city, so that may be off the table completely. We may not be able to have that kind of electoral system. I also think that we need campaign finance, uh, legislation in the city of Sebastopol. Currently, you can invest any amount of money that you want. Into a campaign, and I think that that is not fair. Um, I also would like to see that um, any elected official or um, or representative of the Sebastopol government, that they are not allowed to endorse candidates. That that they can do it individually and personally and privately, but not publicly, and especially not using their, their um, title as an elected official, because I think that is acutely unfair for up and coming. Candidates that aren't well known. So I think that that will also create more um, diversification on city council. And um. There's one other thing. Oh, and I would, I want to raise the, the city pay. Right now, we make three hundred dollars a month, and I think that the maximum that we can make by law is just under nine hundred dollars a month. Uh, so I would like to see that raised to the maximum. So that way, persons like you that are working, you know, even though it's only nine hundred dollars a month, um, it's uh, it's, it helps to supplement. The amount of time that you're spending and makes it more affordable for you to actually participate with your government instead of having rich, old, retired, white people. Running things. You know what I mean? Because that's kind of what we have right now. We have rich, retired, old people on council, and I would love to see a much more diverse and younger. Um, council, and I think that that would be a way to all of those um. Um, uh, steps, I think, would, would be, if we could adopt that policy, would be beneficial to creating a more diverse council. And that would generally, I mean, naturally, hopefully, you would see Indigenous leadership come out of that. And so I, that, you can watch for that, that will be coming. I think it is the second week in October. If you want to participate in that, I would welcome that, because it would be nice to hear you support. You know, term limits and, and whatever other ideas that you might have for, for making, and for involving Indigenous leaders in, in our community.
That's really interesting. Thank you for sharing that idea or series of ideas. Uh, and that kind of connects to this next point. Um, so I don't know if you'll have anything extra to add to it, but. Um, how will you involve and include youth voices in local government, particularly those of color?
Well, you're involved right now. I think it's great, and I have been participating at the high school district level. I. I actually also tried to, uh, I did bring to the uh, city council agenda a, a proposal to. Um, create a, a city council liaison to the two school districts, uh, the Sebastopol Union School District and the Sebastopol. And the Western Home County Union High School District. And so that way, we actually had a representative from the city of Sebastopol that would attend all the board meetings and vice versa. And that we would have this great communication between us to get the youth involved. And then, um. But I didn't, no, none of my colleagues supported it. They all thought, well, that's in independent jurisdiction. We don't have any say in what they do. They don't have any say in what I do. And I responded. It absolutely, that there's not any common sense in government when you have these, these sovereign jurisdictions. So close in proximity, and they're not even speaking to each other. It just makes no sense to me. So I think that that would be one way to get the youth involved. Um. I also talked about having a youth representative um, on city council. Like, kind of similar to what you do on the, on the high school board, so that you could um, actually have a representative that sets on. The dais with the council that is a representative of the youth, and there are many models that I did, I have to look back at my notes, um, but that was another agenda item that didn't get any support from my colleagues. But I think that that's a way to, to include the youth. And I, I. I have a great faith in the youth of this country. I think we're, it's gonna be great, predominantly the female youth. I think it's awesome. We're only one hundred years into women voting, and I've been thinking about this, is, is like, so when I was born, women had only been voting for forty two years, right? Now we're a hundred years, right? So by the time you all are dead, you know, it's gonna be whatever how many hundred and sixty or hundred and seventy years that women have been voting. You know what I mean? It's like, awesome. So the progress that has been made in this last hundred years is, is unbelievable, and if we continue that. Rate of progress, we're gonna be in great shape. We're gonna have fifty women in the U S Senate soon, which is gonna really be awesome. I think that if we, once we have equal representation in the. In the House and, and that the most powerful people in the world that are getting off of Air Force One are equally represented by women, I think that that is gonna be really great for the world as a whole. So I have a great amount of faith in, in what's happening. And, you know, I was really responsible for. Uh, getting all the banners put up. I don't know if you've seen the banners for the hundred year anniversary. Yeah, that, so I really, with no help from my female colleagues, I'm, I'm. I'm the dais with me, which is really surprising. None of them wanted to help. So I kind of did that on my own, and the flags, we have these awesome suffrage flags now. We have a hundred of them. They're stored. They're stored at the, at the uh, Public Works Yard, so those are able to go up anytime that we want, you know? So that's really important that we celebrate what women have done and what they're going to do, in my opinion, that men need to take the more supportive role instead of. The. Yeah, and, yes, that, just, just that, the more supportive role in supporting the women in leadership. So, so I think all of the problems will resolve themselves what, once we have that happen. So it's up to all of you. But now, if there's any, uh, no pressure, this, if the world goes to hell, it's your fault.
Wow.
Okay.
Um, so our final question um, for this whole meeting is, what is your overall vision for Sebastopol?
Oh, geez, um. Well, aside from what I've already mentioned, you know, I think that we need to have really, for our school districts, we really need to have. This, this great vision for, you know, what Sebastopol represents as far as language and vocational arts. I think that's one thing. Um, I think that we um. Were kind of mocked a little bit by other jurisdictions, and I would like that to change where the other jurisdictions actually have great respect for us. I mean, you know, they kind of, for different reasons, various reasons. Oh, you're from Sebastopol, or oh, Sebastopol, you know, you've probably heard it before, right? I mean, it's, it's pretty much everybody's aware of it. So, so that'd be nice if that could change. Um. I've already seen the diversity of Sebastopol, just by virtue of being downtown for twenty seven years, is already increasing. So I think, um. I think that we're already on a great trajectory, and I would just like to like, help usher the natural evolution. Of what's supposed to happen with human consciousness and our evolving as a country. I would just like to see that. Continue and just kind of usher that in. Uh, a more friendly Sebastopol where everybody's really um. Just basically where everybody is just really nice to each other and waves and just this really genuine and authentic.
Alright, that sounds really great. So, thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us. It's really great to talk to you. Is there anything?
Yeah, same, right back at you. I'm just reflecting you as well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else in particular you want to share with us?
No, other than my gratitude and my real respect for y'all. Thank you, and I expect to see your name on the ballot. Do you all live in Sebastopol proper? No, none of you? Oh, no. Right, well, you're gonna have to move here. Get involved in politics or, or really get involved and, and really make, you know. I mean, I, I look at it this way. If we don't participate with our government, we are the subject of it. So, you know, I, I appreciate that you're participating. That's, I have a great deal of respect for that. Thank you. Totally great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I hope you have a beautiful day and nice week and enjoy the fresh air. It's really nice out there today.
Yeah.
Alright, good. Bye.
Bye. Do you guys need to go?